I will call the meeting to an end. Can we please start with a roll call?
Absolutely. President Abbas.
President.
Vice President Martin, here. Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lemmer.
Here.
Alder Wehelier.
Here.
Alder Bennett is excused and Alders Carter and Harrington McKinney are running a little late, but we have quorum.
Thank you very much. Can I, Joe, can we please have a IT announcement?
Sure. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in the virtual email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep an eye on the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate the video as you're speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, remember the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the body, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Chair of the floor is yours.
Very much, Joe. With that, can we please have a motion approval of the minute of the March twenty ninth meeting?
I move approval of the previous meeting's minutes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Can I have a second, please? Second by order, Heck. Any questions, comments in the minute? See any hand raised? I'll concede question animus. Next is public comment. Matt Lynn, I believe there is no public comment at this time, right?
No, we have no registrants for public comment or any other agenda items at this time.
Thank you very much. Next is the presentation, agenda item number two, legislative file number seven zero zero three seven, presentation twenty twenty two. The new Wisconsin Energy Efficiency Summit. I, that's a quick update. I attended that summit under the ordinance adopted by the council. Council members are subject to give a presentation after their event, which is paid by the City of Madison. Through our automatic accounts. So I attended that event. It's been a while now, so I'm just looking into my notes. There was quite a bit of policy discussion in that forum. We will discuss about. Air Source Heat Bomb, the new technology which could be used in state of Wisconsin in minus thirteen degree. Also, there was quite a bit of discussion about how electrification can happen on all the level, including the transportation and. Residential scale. One of the most interesting thing which I would like to share with the council is about the microgrid. Some of big institutions, they use microgrid where they disconnect themselves from the. Like in case M G N E have a grid system, so you can disconnect with them, you can have your own microgrid. And if you have renewable energy, solar, or if you're using fossil fuel like gas, you can. Create much lower carbon emission than coal and use your own microgrid to transfer. So I think so that's a. Very interesting idea. If I get some time, I'm going to explore for City of Madison and see how we can reduce our carbon emissions through microgrid and what are the legal aspect of that? So there was a lot of other information, like technical information which I can share, but these are some of the highlights which are on policy scale which we can use for our own city as well. Any question on that presentation? Okay, I don't see any hand raised. With that, we have a really lengthy agenda, so I'm very brief about my presentation. We go next to the new business item, agenda item number three, legislative file number seven zero six four two, substitute establishing a common council. Prohibited harassment slash or discrimination policy. Attorney Haas. No, first, can we have a motion, please?
I, oh, sorry. Thank you. I move the, I believe it is the substitute. For, is it advising approval?
Okay.
Yes.
Your second?
Second.
Let's move and second question for the staff. Attorney Haas, can I ask a question to you?
Sure.
Yeah, Attorney Haas, thank you very much. Could you please give a little background about this particular work I requested you to do and little background?
Sure, I was really having some trouble with my audio. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, that's, that's better. Thank you. Okay, so. This is item three, is that correct? Okay. Well, this is Alder Wehelier's proposal, so and Alder Abbas also requested. That we work on a policy which is essentially is aimed at. Sort of adopting A P M three dash five for the council to the extent that we can. And this has been discussed, I think, for years. About adopting A P Ms, which are mayoral directives. And making the council subject to them. There are some that are clearly, I mean, the. Alders have to follow such as use of city vehicles and things like that, but policies like this, A P M three dash five, which are, which. Can involve potential discipline of city employees cannot really be adopted. As is to Alders because Alders are not subject to, they're legislative, obviously legislative elected officials. And so the executive cannot impose a policy that binds Alders in the same way. So we, we really borrowed a lot. Karen and I worked on this. We borrowed quite a bit from the City of O'Clare. They have a policy similar to this and we tried to adopt the provision so that. It essentially tries to lay out expectations for Alders about how they interact with each other and with staff and with the public. And I think that's maybe the most significant part. The second piece of it is sort of. Kind of enforcement or quasi enforcement, or what do we do when there's an incident that. That needs to be resolved either between Alders or between Alders and staff and Alders and the public. So I don't know if you'd like me to go into that, but I would expect that hopefully those would be kind of rare instances and in a couple of cases. These are options that are already available to the Alders. And I would argue that quite a bit of this policy, really Alders. Or the public could take advantage of the options even if. The policy was not adopted. For instance, a motion to censure, any Alder can introduce a motion to censure. The provisions about, in serious cases, removing an Alder from the council, that's already in the state statutes. So this policy just kind of incorporates and highlights that that is an option. The last thing I think I'd say is that the policy clarifies that. That staff could use either this policy or A P M three dash five in order to resolve any issues that arise within Alder. So maybe I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Any question for Attorney Haas? Alder Lemmer.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that went into this. I just, a couple of things stuck out to me when reading it. One of them is the provision that reads, any member of the public who feels a violation of this policy has occurred during or outside of a public council meeting. May raise the issue privately with the council member. Attempts should be made to resolve any issue in a professional, private manner. And I guess my concern is that there is a power differential there and I worry that members of the public would. Feel intimidated by, by doing that. And I wonder if that was discussed and if there were other options that were discussed to handle that.
I, I think we did discuss it in different ways. You know, I think we. Struggle a bit with coming up. It's always been the issue, struggling with how to resolve these matters. And so I think, you know, we're open to any other suggestions. Maybe there could be. An option for the public. To contact somebody else besides the Alder who's involved, might be one option. But. That, that's sort of, I guess, what we, what we had as a starting point.
Yeah, all right, that makes sense. I would, I would like to consider other options for folks to contact. And then the other item that stuck out to me is kind of similar. In the second version, where it says council members may ask for the assistance of the common council chief of staff. Or other appropriate city staff in mediating the issue or conflict. I guess my worry, there is the chief of staff. Reports to the council and to council leadership and if there is a complaint about. The folks that they are reporting directly to, that puts them in a pretty bad situation. So I wondered if that was discussed.
So before I turn it over to the sponsors, I, maybe I can backtrack a little bit on my previous question because the language does say. You know, give employees and the members of the public the option to ask for assistance of the council president. It says, if unsuccessful, to me that would mean also if they don't care to approach the Alder specifically, so. Or directly. So I think there was discussion about, you know, who would be. Chosen to help try to mediate issues. And I believe Alder Wehelier requested that we insert the chief of staff there, so maybe she would like to speak to that.
Thank, thank you, Attorney Haas. I think it was Alder Bennett that suggested the chief of staff. My, my recommendations were to have like a five-party. Mediators, which is including the chief of staff, the attorney's office, the civil rights. And, you know, perhaps the, the president of the council. But I think that also was kind of, you know, the same situation that Alder Lemmer is bringing is. How do you respond to. An accusation that, that the person you're accusing is your boss? So. I, I think that needs to be a little bit clarified, perhaps, I think. Not including the chief of staff, but perhaps the president of the council. Or the attorney's office or the, you know, department of civil rights. So I think if we have like. A body of four or five, that can really mitigate the issue. So rather than just between within the council office.
If it's okay with the body, I can answer Alder Lemmer's question because I worked with Alder Bennett on this. So we had, we had a really detailed discussion on this particular point. I think so the intent of Alder Bennett was, and she's not here today, so unfortunately she's not feeling well, so. The intent was, as chief of staff is aware around the council dynamic, like what is happening within the council. Sometimes there's a policy-related issues, there are sometimes other related issues attached. And perhaps the party spend a person who's not comfortable with council leadership. Giving that another opportunity to work with chief of staff as a neutral person. The intent is not to put that person into the middle of the conflict, but the intent is to have somebody in the middle who can de-escalate the situation. In case if there's a council president, a member have a major dispute, to de-escalate and find some better solution. Chief of staff is there and if that won't happen, then there are other mechanisms to do it, but that was the intent. And Karen, feel free to unmute yourself if you want to chime in as your chief of staff too, so. I think the executive committee will appreciate your perspective too.
From my perspective. I envision this to be something that would take place at a initial level. Rather than as things have become more and more escalated. I think there's a difference there too in terms of what sort of the. Intensity of the initial situation and then also as things escalate, I think different things will have to happen, but. I think that part of what I can do is help. If people want to sit down, but they would like a third party with them when they're sitting down, I'm happy to. Help them out in that way. And so I was thinking more along those types of lines as opposed to. A situation where two people are very, very, I don't know, it's gotten escalated and maybe we need to take a different approach at that point, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Lemmer. Alder Heck.
Thank you, President Abbas. First, thanks for the, to the sponsors and to staff that's giving these important comments. I, I think this is something we need to work through. It's very important. So I'm glad we have the opportunity to discuss this all together. I guess with regard to that last issue, my thought is that we need a provision for a real third party. Who's not involved in any way and it could even eventually be an outside facilitator or mediator. And that, that we would have the benefit of somebody who's not. At all involved with, with either party and that, and that that would be the best path forward, but. I, I mean, we'd have to discuss that if you wanted to have different levels, you know, as Karen suggested, you know, maybe some initial something and that. But I think that there should always be the option for an outside mediator. When, when requested or, or perhaps always, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to evaluate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Carter.
Thank you. Let me just shed a little bit of light on this. When I was president, I had to intercede. Between an Alder and our staff. That's what I did as president. Now, if it would have, and I'm not going to name the Alder, so don't ask. But if it had risen above having a conversation, if it had continued, then I would have sought outside. As, as Alder Heck said, third person. I think that it should be at the discretion of the chief of staff. Because hopefully there'll be approach during the. I don't want to say the beginning, but I'll say the beginning of what's going on. I had to actually have two conversations before the action stopped. But it does happen. I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that this is a real thing and not an imaginary thing. And also, just one more thing, I've done it between. There, there's also issues between Alders and city staff. That can escalate. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Vice President Martin?
Yes, I was wondering, I know that we have our D C R staff here, particularly Director Davis as well as Melissa Gombar. And I was hoping that they would be able to, if we could kind of add them into the, the answer portion of the questions because I know that they have a lot of insights and I would like to. Hear some of their responses to the issues that are being brought up. So just kind of a standing question for them if we, if we have. Questions, if we could allow them time to answer them from their point of view as well. I would very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent point, Vice President Martin. Now, would you like to speak on the policy and some of the questions you already heard?
Sure, and I do apologize that my video is not on. I was trying to catch the beginning of my son's tennis game. And so, so I have just arrived home in, in front of my computer. And so if, if, if you don't mind, I know Melissa has some, some thoughts. If, if she could just sort of apprise you of her perspective and then I'll, I'll actually be joining from my computer.
Thank you very much and thank you for joining us and giving us your time. Melissa.
Yeah, thank you all very much. Doing my sound check. Can y'all hear me okay? Awesome. So if we haven't met, I'm Melissa Gombar. I'm responsible for administering. Everything that has to do with the prohibited harassment discrimination policy for city staff. That's the A P M three dash five. And, you know, I, I will say, you know, a couple of thoughts just in general that I, I think are worth sharing. That kind of get to your questions, but I'm also just going to take the liberty of kind of addressing the whole policy just for a few moments, if you don't mind. I, I do think it's a really great step. It is somewhat awkward for us. We're training every city employee and we're telling them that we don't. Allow prohibited harass, we don't allow harassment, we don't allow discrimination in the workforce. And, you know. Some folks will raise their hand and say, well, I, I do feel like I've been treated negatively by Alders and. We're left kind of saying, I'm sorry, you know, like it, it's very hard and it's very awkward. Because y'all lead by example for city employees, right? You are our leaders, you are our leadership, you and the mayor and. The power dynamic that was mentioned between policymaker and staff is so important to keep in mind. The employees that I've spoken to that have felt like either it's a range invalidated, dismissed, criticized. Based on their protected class by council members. Isn't good. Specific allegations, naming specific council members haven't even come up because folks are afraid of retaliation. They're not only afraid how they'll be treated individually, they're afraid maybe will their project get funding? Will they be able to operate seriously as a professional in this field if they bring a concern forward? What will happen to their name in the newspaper, right? So. The most common areas of concern that I'm hearing are gender and race. Folks feeling dismissed or invalidated due to their gender or race, some comments around women bringing issues to the council. And those issues or staff opinion not being heard until a male or a white person says it. And so, you know, few employees wanted to speak up about this policy and I, I feel like it's my duty and my job to, to be here and answer questions for y'all. I don't want people to be afraid of retaliation. I, I'm not because this is what I've committed my career to, is speaking truth to these power dynamics and these issues. And so I thank you for listening. I'm very, very intrigued by the conversation about mediation. That's something that we've been wanting to look at. For resolving our internal complaints as well. And if there was a program that was available. When I hired our affirmative action specialist, part of the reason I hired her is because she's a trained mediator and we wanted to launch a mediation program. For some time now. And so that could very easily sit within the systems and structures that we already have available at this, at the city. Should funding become available for such a thing. And so I, I do think this proposed policy is a great step. I'm hearing there are a lot of questions, but what I think. My motto is first make it work, then make it work better. I think in city government, we do tend to over perfect what it is that we're going for. I think it would be a really great move to approve this and work out the kinks and make it better over time. So that we're not paralyzed by perfection and that city staff get the message from you all. That you take these concerns seriously and that you want to hold yourselves accountable to the behavior that we expect from our city employees. And we hold them accountable too. So again, thank you for your time. I'm hoping Norman might be available now and settled at home. But if not, I'm definitely continued, I'll be here for, for questions if there's any. Oh, there you go, Norm, perfect.
Do, do you like to speak to the policy as well? Thank you, Melissa.
Sure, I'm happy to. Thank you. But if, if there are Alders with questions in the queue that you'd like to recognize first, I'm, I'm happy to defer to their question.
Yeah, I can see there's quite a bit of hand raising. We can come back to you, Norm. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And I apologize if I had some technical difficulties, so I hope I'm not repeating any questions that have already been asked. One of them was around in the enforcement section for the points of order during meetings. So. That one says violations of this policy when made during a chair of public meeting may be noted. May be noted promptly after their occurrence by rising to a point of order and stating the violation or concern. And then the council president or chair of the meeting shall rule on the point of order. So I guess I'm just, I want to clarify if I'm understanding that correctly because it seems like I'm imagining, I mean. This covers everything from like down to microaggressions and things that would normally have some kind of investigation. And like this sounds like it's basically kind of a, a public accusation that the poor chair is going to be forced to like make a ruling on in the, in the moment. So I, I guess just trying to get some clarity on, on that and how that would interplay normally with like Robert's rules and something that is out of order otherwise.
Would you like me to address that?
Sure.
Thanks. That, that, that's a great example of sort of incorporating tools that are already available. A point of order can be raised. In meetings under Robert's rules and for instance, if, if an Alder. Directs some derogatory personal statement towards another member of the council, the mayor or the chair. Somebody can raise a point of order or the mayor on their own can. Basically admonish the Alder in some cases, you know, request an apology, whatever they think is appropriate on the spot. And so I think the policy just kind of calls attention to the fact that that is an option for sort of an immediate. Try to, you know, get an immediate resolution or at least a temporary resolution to the issue and. You know, the city has been having discussions now for years about microaggressions and subtle acts of exclusion and, and. And, you know, the idea being that, you know, it should be a normalized part of the process to, to identify those when they occur. And, and to address them when they occur. And of course, you don't want to disrupt the whole meeting. But it may be appropriate for the mayor or the chair to address it immediately, send that message. And then there's always an opportunity if something, some more significant action is warranted, that the council could take that up at a later meeting. that the council could take that up at a later meeting. I would, and, and I, I just want to, one other point I forgot and I agree, I, I think Melissa made some great points. And, uh, but we wanted to make clear that, you know, this is a harassment and discrimination policy. It's not intended to resolve policy disagreements between Alders. Um, and, you know, criticism of staff that is not personal discriminatory or in harassing. Um, and, um, so I wanted to get that out there also, you know, we did discuss the idea of a mediator. Eau Claire I think has some free mediation service. You know, we didn't have that at our disposal. And so I agree with Melissa that I think it, it's a good idea to try to get some process in place and it can always be looked, we can always look at adjusting it or improving it in different ways.
Thanks for that clarification. Um, in the treatment of staff section, it says that we, um, should refer to staff by title. So that I think is kind of a, it's kind of all over the place, I think today, sometimes folks do, sometimes folks don't. I think there's some people honestly that some of us probably don't even know their actual title. I know with the, the kind of gender guidance, we're not supposed to sort of assume, you know, mister's and missus and those sorts of things. So I guess any, any thoughts on, on that one? Is that, is that really then going to be an infraction of the title if we don't, um, use the staff member's title?
I, I think that's a good point. I mean, in this day and age, I think, you know, titles, a lot of people, I don't think people need to, you know, say Attorney Haas all the time repeatedly. And especially when you have staff that is always in front of the council and has relationships with, working relationships with the council. So, I mean, that's, I think purely a policy question for you all to decide whether that's necessary.
Maybe Chair, I don't know if the sponsors would want to speak to that point if that was the intent or, um?
So as I've said, the intent is, uh, it's a director calling the director with a last name. I noticed on the plan commission, uh, that's the same tradition follow. Uh, I've seen different Alders calling directors, started, we call Attorney Haas. So the intent here is to really, uh, yeah, the way the community give us respect, we call us Alder Abbas. Uh, the way we respect each other, I think so it's important for us to have the same standards for our staff. So the intent here is to put those wording down, uh, to give the similar sort of treatment with the way we get treated.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't really object to it necessarily. I mean, it's, it is, it is different. Um, so I guess just curious how that would be handled with the policy, but I think also one of the real challenges for me personally, because I've actually been kind of trying to do it more just generally is, like, I, I honestly, I don't even know everyone's title. Um, and then in a, like in a meeting and when you're doing stuff like in the, you know, at least in Zoom, we've got like folks' names, but there just says staff and it's got a first and a last name. Um, so I mean, if this is something that we really want to do seriously and consistently, I think we should find some tools to support Alders to be able to do that because I, I, at least personally, I think it's, I'm, I'm definitely going to struggle and I would hate to feel like I'm letting folks down or, um, violation of the policy. Um, uh, another question I had was there's a section that said you're not so, not to not solicit any support from employees. I think that, you know, this is around like campaigning sort of stuff, which I think like on the one hand kind of makes sense. But then I was thinking of, what if you're like doing doors during campaign season and knock on a city employee's door and, I mean, sometimes you don't even necessarily know who they are. Is that actually like barred by this policy then? You couldn't ask for their support outside of work setting when you're knocking on their door? And, and I guess, and also why is it in the discrimination and harassment policy, I guess also?
Yeah, I, I don't think it was the intent to prohibit, uh, candidates from asking for support outside of the workplace. I think that, you know, it might belong in the policy because if you're asking for political support in the workplace, I mean, that, obviously there's a power dynamic and that's inappropriate and staff could feel intimidated or pressured, um, to, to respond in a certain way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I would, I mean, it seems like something maybe in the, like, in the code ethics or something, but I, I don't know. I guess it would be good to clarify that. I just, because the way it reads right now to me doesn't really leave, um, any exceptions. Um, the, there, there was a part that said compulsory attendance would be one of the kind of enforcement mechanisms. I honestly didn't even understand that in relation to this policy. So I don't know if somebody could speak to that section. It's, it's, I think it's E after censured, it says other possible penalties or sanctions.
Uh, I'm trying to, unfortunately, my internet froze up, so I'm trying to get back to the, uh, to the language. I can't even close out my browser at this point.
I don't know if my sponsors or I don't know who kind of put it in there, but it's, I think it's page four. Well, and I'm look, I'd actually not sure if it's, I didn't, I just saw the substitute now, so I'm not even sure what was changed in the substitute, but this was in the original at least.
I would like Attorney Haas to mention that because this, I think so this particular portion was also, was taken through the Eau Claire, uh, uh, audience. So, and there's also statute attached to it, so I will, I will refer this to Attorney Haas for the, you know, legal input on that.
I'm attempting to get the document back up here. I apologize. Okay. Okay, um, page four, you said Alder Foster?
Uh, yeah, it's the section E after the, the D censured, it says other possible penalties or sections. And number one says compulsory attendance of a member. It's a form of sanction.
And I can, I can see what Attorney Haas was reading this. I can see Melissa's hand is also raised. I'm not sure if she wants to talk about that.
You know, uh, uh, the language in there, I think was, was just intended to indicate what other possible sanctions there were available under the statutes. Um, so, uh, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what situation it would be appropriate to, for the, for the council to direct an alder to, to attend as a requirement. Um, I, I'm guessing we just borrowed that, inserted that from the Eau Claire policy?
Maybe their policy was a little bit broader than just a discrimination harassment policy or something.
There, there were some differences, yeah.
I'm sorry about my dog, but there was that one time that if you didn't attend so many meetings on your committees, I don't know about the council, but on your committees, you can be removed from that committee. So I don't know if that, I know back in 2015, 16, that that was tracked, but I don't know if we've been tracking that recently.
I mean, that's certainly.
So I just wanted you to know.
We do track them, uh, during council leadership meetings, sometimes, uh, we get information on certain Alders not attending, more missing more than half or something. So there's a gentle reminder to them, like yes, we do still track that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I, I, I was reading this as a harassment and discrimination policy, so I just didn't understand at all what we were going to compel people to attend. So maybe that needs to get just removed, um, if it's not really related to this. Uh, I think my last, my last question was just, um, in the, so when there is a complaint that goes, gets routed through CCC, um, it doesn't mention it explicitly, would that be open or, or closed session? I know we would normally do closed session for personnel matters. Would this be considered such and would it be closed or?
I, I think it would be, uh, an open session item. Now, you know, there, there may be specific cases, for instance, if it involves a city employee, that there might be grounds to have it in closed session. Um, but I think it was, in, in general, probably be an open session item.
Even in the, in the, this isn't a determination, this is somebody accuses somebody of something. CCC is supposed to review it to determine whether they, kind of what their findings are and you're, that would be an open session.
Yeah, I think it's essentially, uh, you know, kind of a quasi-hearing where each side basically just gets to explain what their side of it is and then CCC, uh, proceeds from there. And the reason it may be, it, it probably needs to be open is that, you know, one result of that could be a, a, a censure resolution or a resolution to remove somebody from office. And so those would all be public processes. Okay, adding a little more to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Heck, questions?
Thank you. Um, I have a question about what we were discussing, uh, just a little bit ago about the using of titles. And I wanted to make sure I understand, uh, what this might apply to. Um, I, the policy is applying to Alders. So Alders and sta, and, and Alders would need to use titles, but it's, it's not, this policy doesn't apply to staff. So staff doesn't necessarily have to use titles when addressing Alders or each other. Although, I mean, oftentimes staff do, uh, use titles. Um, it, it's really about, uh, Alders and, and then i- isn't that correct? That's the intent is to, this only applies to Alders and not resident members of committees, let's say. Is that correct?
Right, correct.
And if I'm, and it would apply to alder, uh, language, let's say, on all BCCs? When, when, when participating in any committee?
Well, I think it's, um, it's focused on, I mean, Alders, well, Alder interactions with each other. So I guess that could be in a BCC meeting as well. Yeah, in any, in any form, in a, in, in a council meeting or outside a council meeting. So that could, that could be at a BCC meeting.
And so, you know, if, if that's the interpretation, I'm thinking about subcommittees I'm on that have, you know, two Alders and one resident member and we certainly call each other by our first names and it's, it's good to have that casual relationship in that, in that setting. So I'm a little concerned about that. Um, but if, if that's the intent, uh, uh, it's, it's a little bit complicated. Thank you.
Um, Alder Abbas, if I can just mention one thing, which I mentioned to President Abbas is that, um, and I realize there's a, a number of new items on your agenda tonight and also that we're expecting an awful lot of items to be excluded from the consent agenda at the council meeting. And so some of these matters that maybe are not as timely, um, you may wish to either refer or recommend the council refer and, and that you can continue this conversation at a subsequent meeting because there, there's a lot of new material here. And I'm concerned that you're going to be at the council meeting pretty late tonight. And so it, just I wanted to throw that out in case you wanted to consider sort of tabling this and moving on to, to other items as well.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. And, uh, if, if the, uh, if the chair is amenable, I'd be willing to make such a motion at this time, but it, and I see other hands are up, so whenever appropriate.
All right, sounds good. Uh, I can see Melissa, your hand is raised. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, just a brief, um, point of education. Political beliefs are a protected class under our policy. And so I think that's what would tie in the, um, the, like, asking for support for campaign materials from city employees. Um, again, the power dynamic plus the protective class of, of protected, uh, of political beliefs would in fact make that a covered activity, uh, under the policy.
Thank you. Alder Carter?
I just wanted to briefly talk about, um, the titles and, and, and pronouns because I think that I've heard Alders say, don't call me by my first name. I am Alder Smith. And I think that although sometimes in, with each other in a public meeting in the council, we will not call each other Alder Smith, for example. But I do feel that it is just as respectful to say, um, Melissa, can I call you Melissa? Um, because we don't know. Someone might want to be called, um, Director Davis and not Norm. I mean, I think these are things that we can do on our own as just general respect. As far as what, uh, Alder Heck mentioned about the small, uh, committee that he's on or knows of, I think there are norms within a committee where you've allowed each other to call you by first names and it wouldn't rise to a complaint. So I think we have to look at that without having to always put down every nuance that we feel is not covered in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. Alder Bennett, question for the staff? So Alder Bennett's hand was raised. He just disappeared. The petition might got disconnected. I will go to Alder Figueroa for next. Question for the staff?
Thank you, Chair. I, um, I actually agree with Alder Carter. Um, so then I don't really understand why we have to put that on writing, to be honest with you. Like, it's just make that, use that to make a policy, it, it just opens a door to, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel this, I mean, I appreciate the efforts on this document. I read it multiple times. I compare it with the city staff, with the city's policy and I read a few other from around the country. I, I mean, I get what we're trying to do, but it's, to me, I'm concerned that I don't have a clear path on how the process will work to address the issues when they are raised, especially when it, around microaggressions. I mean, how, how, what are the steps for that? You know, what, what? Why have a policy to attack a problem instead of having policies in place that prevents those problems from happening? Why don't we have a policy that focuses on, on microaggression trainings, for example? Why don't we have, um, something that, a policy that really, that really focuses on prevent, preventative measures to ensure that we have the systems and the knowledge base in place to not cross a line? So, um, that, that's kind of my, my biggest concern with, with this document. And my second biggest concern is that this is something that involves the 20 of us and I know that everybody's invited to this meeting and they should have made it here, but I think more of, you know, there should be, there, there should be a forum for us to have the time to, to have the in-depth discussion that we are having here, but with more, with additional Alders. And tonight's, tonight's agenda is so packed and, um, that I, I just don't see how we will have any effect. how we will have any effective conversation like we're doing today. I mean, right now, on the, on the next meeting. So again, I appreciate all the efforts. I, I, I'm hearing all the, the feedback provided. I am, I'm not going to say that I'm not a little bit chock about Melissa's input on regards to, to, to how staff feels with some relationships there. But definitely those issues need to be addressed. But I, I would love to have a little bit more of, little bit more time and opening the space for deep discussion on, on this policy. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Alder Cole. Just to one of your questions I'm hearing is about the trainings in the resolution. You can see there is a wording about training around microaggression. We left it more like a broad language on training. So that's the intent here in the resolution. And also as a council president for last many months, I reach out to Y W C. I'm working on some sort of training, that trend or some sort of training for council. And perhaps the next council president can take the lead and discuss this definitely. And microaggression is important, but that should not, again, I'm getting from question to comment section. It should not prevent us to move policy forward. But we can discuss more in the comment section because there's a fair bit of hand raised. But I appreciate you coming to you. Alder Foster?
Oh, wait, excuse me.
Alder Bennett, yes, go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to ask the clerk to note me as present. But are we still in question for staff or is there a motion on the floor?
We are questioning the staff right now and the motion is to adopt. So right now we had questions. Do you have a question for the staff?
No, I kind of just want to call the question because we're going to talk about this in literally an hour.
I, if Alder Foster, you?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand what, if you're going to refer it, I can hold my stuff. But I don't, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if we're discussing or not. You, you tell me, Chair.
So if there's no further question, I need, Alder Bennett, do you mind if I can ask members for a discussion? Unless you're asking for a call of question, then we can go for the vote right now.
I'm asking, you know, if you, if you want to discuss, be my guest. There's a lot of items on the agenda today, so just want to keep the ball rolling.
Right, appreciate that.
And we're going to talk about this again at council, so.
Alder Heck?
Thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where, where we are in our process here with this particular agenda item. It's a little random, but I would like to make a substitute motion at the appropriate time to refer this.
Well, go ahead, make a motion.
Okay, thanks.
Alder Foster is okay with that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a substitute motion to refer this to the May 10th C C E C meeting. And I can speak to that if I get a second.
May, a second here? Second. Lema, Alder McKinnon, Alder Lema, or make any one of them second that? Go ahead, Alder Heck.
Thank you. As I think we all agree, we, this is a super important work. And we want to do a, an appropriate consideration of all the various parts of this. And I, I, what my hope would be for the, the May 10th meeting is that we establish a process for, for reviewing some of these things that have come up. And hopefully we can be nimble and quick. But I, I'm hoping at the C C E C meeting on the 10th, we can discuss that process. Alder Fugara Cole mentioned, you know, do we want to have all of council involved? I, I'm not sure about that, but I think we need to figure out a process to, to, to nimbly and quickly move forward with this because it's really important that we do so. I just don't think we're quite ready. Thank you.
It's Alder Heck. I can see staff hand raised. Matt, your hand was raised.
Yes, it was simply for Alder Heck's motion. Our next C C E C meeting is actually May 24th. There's not going to be a C C E C May 10th. That's my apologies for scheduling it initially. Sorry, everyone.
I'm fine with May 24th. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Carter and then Alder Foster.
Let me just say that if this does get referred, I beg you all to read this policy so that when we come in on the 24th, and I believe that's the date, that we are moving swiftly and that we all know what the policy says. Other than, it seems like Alder Lema, I'm calling you out, and Alder Foster, who reads these things and, and, and are, you know, really contributing. So let's all read this so that on the 24th, we are dealing with this swiftly if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter, Alder Foster.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. Actually, one quick question. Staff Gombar, what title should I use to refer you? Because I wanted to, I don't want to.
I like that. You did that eloquently, like Staff Gombar, and then what should I call you? Melissa's fine.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated your earlier point, Melissa, that kind of the importance of having an equal standard with staff around this. I am 100% supportive of, of adopting a policy. I think this is actually like, I mean, I had a lot of questions, but I really, I feel like it's like 90% there. I, I do think, I mean, I agree, we should be careful and not let perfect be the enemy of the good. I also think we're going to adopt a new policy. Let's make sure we're doing the best we can, you know, give it, give it a solid go. And so I do think there's enough, enough things that we should really just revisit and, and tweak before we, we pass it. So I definitely am supportive of referral and thank you, Alder Carter. I, I did read it carefully and I'll, I can share some of my written stuff as well. Because I'd, I'd like to get us to a place where we can, we can get this adopted quickly as well. So thanks for the consideration and thanks for the work that went into it, everyone.
Thank you, Alder Foster. I will also suggest, if that's okay, our chief of staff can also share this policy with all 20 of them and ask them to share their comments, share their recommendations. So at then, on 20 from C C E C, we are not really jumping around, changing this and making amendments. We can work behind the scene and then we can discuss furthermore at C C E C really policy direction. So with, with that motion on, on the floor, Alder Heck, please go ahead.
Sorry, one quick clarification. Would it be the substitute version or the original version that you'd be sharing with all alders?
Substitute.
Okay, thanks.
So there is a motion to refer the substitute and there is a second. If there is, I, I, if I don't see any hand raised, I will consider as unanimous vote. If you have any objection, please respond. Alder Bennett?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Alder Bennett abstained to that. Please note that with that, we will, this motion is referred to May 24th. Next is agenda item number four, legislative file number 70634, accepting the final report of President World Group in Environmental Justice, Alder Lema.
Sorry, when we get to it, I'll just explain the report for everyone.
All right. Can we please have a motion to accept the report?
Move acceptance or move advising acceptance to the council.
I can believe Alder Lema, that's second from you. Do you wish to speak, please?
I do, thank you. I will be considerate of everybody's time and just go over the kind of high level overview of the report. The President's Work Group on Environmental Justice formed in order to address two main topics. One, to provide the council with policy recommendations on how to address mitigation, mitigating the impacts of F 35s and PFAS. And two, to create a PFAS outreach strategy and a plan for the city's role in addressing PFAS. And I'll go through the recommendations that we came up with. During the first half of the meetings, we discussed the options for mitigating the impacts of F 35s. We started with a discussion on creating a zoning overlay district to limit or stop residential construction. And one of the main challenges with that is that, that creates non-conforming uses. So residential developments that already exist there. If, you know, a person was wanting to sell their home, for example, they would be unable to. It also creates other challenges, including making it harder to get insurance, making it harder to get loans. And it also greatly impacts the ability to make repairs or improvements to one's property. So those were some major concerns for us in discussing a zoning overlay district. We then discussed enacting a development moratorium. We, you know, went through a couple of examples of development moratoriums that have been proposed elsewhere in the state. All of them are very different from the situation here in Madison. And there is a very high bar for enacting a development moratorium. And we didn't see a path for achieving it. Additionally, a development moratorium has a one-year limit with up to six months of an extension. So that did not seem to be the right fit for trying to address the impacts of F 35s and residential development. So next, we discussed policy for requiring noise mitigation for residential developments within the contours expected to have noises of 65 decibels or higher. Unfortunately, we are pretty restricted by state statute. The minimum and maximum building code prevents us from requiring noise mitigation beyond what is required within state statute. With the exception, of course, of any projects that get city funding. For example, affordable housing fund dollars or TIF dollars. Obviously, with those projects, we can require noise mitigation as a requirement if you are taking city funding. So with all of that in mind, our recommendations for mitigating the impacts of F 35s include encouraging the use of sound mitigation techniques. And you're requiring if a developer is taking city dollars, that they provide noise mitigation if it's within, the contour is expected to have noises of 65 decibels or more. Second, pursuing changes to the state's minimum and maximum building code to add a carve-out provision for noise mitigation requirements for areas around airports. And that is actually a possibility. It sounds like there is potential for bipartisan support on that. So that could actually be something with some hope. And then last, city staff work with districts 12 and 18 alders to rezone the property at 2202 Darwin Road to an appropriate zoning district for, with long-term land use recommendations for employment. That's a mobile home park that is within the F 35 map. So next, I'll go through the recommendations on PFAS mitigation. We received a ton of information from various city departments as well as state agencies about the different aspects of PFAS and who handles what. And it's, I mean, you know, at our level, it's complicated, let alone for, you know, resident who's just trying to understand what PFAS are and what they need to do to, you know, protect their health. So that weighed heavily into our recommendations. So the few main recommendations from this, we felt it was really important to educate the public on PFAS health impacts, especially as they relate to fish consumption. And to really focus on targeted engagement with fish advisories, really engage with substance anglers in the monk community and provide some, you know, kind of targeted communications about PFAS levels and, and fish and what you need to be doing to protect yourself if you are relying on fish in our local lakes. And a lot of our outreach strategy recommendations already, were already being worked on heavily by public health. They already had a, a pretty good outreach strategy. And they also had a, a document that was kind of an F, or PFAS 101. So we thought those looked good. So much of that is incorporated into our outreach recommendations. Second, general outreach at community meetings. We heard a lot about the importance of, you're really meeting people where they are. That was a discussion that we spent some time on. You know, not just having, you know, meetings and, you know, trying to communicate with people during, you know, with the, the typical channels, but think about what, you know, what meetings are they already going to? What are the most appropriate ways for engaging with those communities? And then we also spent a fair amount of time talking about making sure that we have a central resource for information. There are different city departments handling different aspects of PFAS, including public health, including the water utility, including the mayor's office. And we want to make sure that people can come to one spot to find PFAS information online. So having a website that has information that is regularly updated is included in our recommendations. And then part of that is we want a quarterly update on, you know, all things related to PFAS. And then as that update is put together, that information would also refresh that website. And I think that's its basic high-level overview of what we discussed. Invite other folks on the work group or Chair Foster to add anything I left out. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Lema, for the great summary. Alder Carter? You're muted, Alder Carter.
Thank you. Just two things I would also like to add. In addition to the monk community, the African-American community that fish a lot. But also, oh, I know that I get a newsletter from the D N R that will say when to fish and when not to fish. It would be nice if we had that information on the city website. It doesn't come out every day, so it'd be, I think, pretty easy to put a alert on there because that's what the D N R does. Thank you and good work, the committee. I don't know who all was on that committee, but this is a fantastic read. And I really appreciate all the work that you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Carter. If there's no further comments, I would like to give a small shout out to the Chair, Alder Foster. Thank you very much for working so hard and giving your time to the community for such important work. And Alder Lema as a vice chair to you as well for reading this, both of you, and also all the committee members. I attended many of those meetings and I know it was a really robust and difficult discussion and emotional for many of them to ask this topic impact our community at large. But, but those unique policies, you know, thinking about next 30 to 50 year impact. And thank you very much for all the work you guys did. So really appreciate all of you and also the Chair and the Vice Chair. If there's no further comment, I will consider this report approved unanimously. I don't see the hand raised. With that, we will move to next agenda item. Next agenda item is, and just to remind the committee, we have 23 minutes left. And at six, we have to give back the idea of their rights to run council meetings. So next agenda item is agenda item number five, legislative file number 70645, creating section 33.019G of the Madison General Audience to add a self-evaluation of subcommittee unit meeting. of the Madison General Ordinance to add a self-evaluation of subcommittee unit meeting. Can I please have a motion first?
Move approval.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Aldo Rahilly, uh, question for the staff. Aldo Lemon, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and actually perhaps this should go to the sponsors. It's my understanding reading it was that this evaluation form would be required to be used at the end of every meeting of BCCs. Is that correct? And um, if so, why that instead of having BCCs vote amongst themselves about whether they want to do that or not?
Can I speak to that?
Yes, Aldo. Go on.
Thank you. So uh, we did this based on the uh, um, the President World Group for the racial justice equity and terrorism. And with that, uh, one of the area that we discussed was how we retained uh, BCC members. And the mayor specifically specified that, you know, a lot of the times we are focusing more on recruitment, but we need to focus on retention. And we had some member from, I think even Melissa, who was here before. She talked about how we can really engage the BCC members into the why, why they are part of this commission board or committees. So with that, I, you know, we talked about how we can be more self-regulatory. And this form was authored by Pat Dillon somewhere. I don't know his last name, but he served on the Water Utility Board. And as a board member of the Water Utility Board, it really inspired me how people are holding themselves accountable in how they conduct the meeting. So I brought that and invited Pat to talk about the form and the nature of the uh, evaluation and how it's conducted. So basically what it is, is just we are holding each other accountable when we are in the public domain, but also helping our constituents that they can be uh, respected and welcomed. So this BCC form has two components. One is the evaluation, which is like, you know, for example, uh, in in the case of Water Utility Board, the uh, there is an observer. Uh, by that is, hold on, let me see how it reads. So the self-evaluation is handy and powerful tool to maintain and continually improve excellence in governing. This approach calls for a regular reflection, discussion of some aspect of community discipline or job performance preferably at each meeting. The purpose of the self-evaluation form is to guide discussion about the additional learning and growth that will be useful. The self-evaluation is not a report card. Rather, the goal is to increase awareness and enable the BCC to maintain and improve the quality of its collective leadership. By engaging in this learning conversation at each and every meeting uh, and taking action consistent with its emerges, the BCC will continue to develop the capacity to effectively communicate and equitably engage in its members. So like I said, there's one, three areas that uh, BCCs can choose. One is the observer, for example, with the B, with the Water Utility. The observer is a member chosen to monitor the BCC activity over the course of the meeting. A member observes, fills out the BCC evaluation form and uses as its guide to discuss as an agenda item at the end of the meeting without any judgment or admonishment. The second piece is a whole group feedback. This option allows members of the BCC to fill out the form and discuss their results as group at the end of each meeting as an item on the agenda. And the final piece is if there's contentious or, you know, uh, if there's an issue, if there are issues. These options allow each member to fill out self-evaluation form and send it to their committee staff person each, after each meeting. The staff member will then review the self-evaluation form promptly before and the next meeting. Notify the BCC Chair and the Vice Chair of any self-evaluation questions that have received a score of two or less. The BCC Chair and the Vice Chair will then put the topic on the agenda item for the next discussion. In each of these cases, it's advisable also to plan a quarterly reflection of the self-evaluation results from previous quarter in order to assess the improvement of the plan. So as you can see the form, there's uh, the questions are all members actively participate in discussion and all members have opportunities to voice their opinions in the position, you know, agenda items. Uh, second question might be members come prepared, engage in discussion. Third is members engage actively listening and avoid interrupting other speakers. Members offers honest opinion and respect the viewpoint expressed by other members. And find, you know, number five is member on a city procedures and policies as outlined in city ordinance. Members represent collective interest of current and future Madison residents. Members make decisions based on equity principle, considering decision impact in all residents. The decision-making process considers who benefits, who is burdened, who does not have a voice at the table? How can policy make or mitigate unintended consequence? So those are the, the uh, the objective of this form. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aldo Rahilly, for explaining uh, explaining in excellent. Aldo Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I think also a question for the sponsor. So I understand this has been used at Water Utility for a while. Um, could you share kind of in practice, like, so it's the last item on the agenda? There's, Water Utility has generally used the first option of the member observer, I think you said. So they, are they like filling it out during the meeting? Or they give them a little, you give them some time after the rest of the agenda items are done? And then if you, maybe just describe kind of how it normally goes out? And is there discussion? How much time does it take? Those sorts of things.
Okay, uh, good question. So the Water Utility, when you are an observer, there's an agenda item in that at the end of the mid, at the end of the, all the agendas. And the members choose one person to observe. For example, you can be the observer and you see how, you know, the meeting is going on. And then we say, Aldo Foster, uh, the meeting evaluation. And then you read, and then you read all those five questions and say, yes, we did this, as we did this, this, you know, all these things. So you go one by one for that. Uh, if there is an issue, then we can, you know, they talked about, but so far since I have been on the uh, the board for more than a year, for, for a year, I haven't seen anything. But consistently, one person will be chosen to speak to the uh, the nature and the how the meeting went.
So in your experience, since you've been on the board, it's all, everything's basically always fully met? And there's no discussion or anything?
No. And that's one of the things that really, you know, when you're coming in, knowing that the meeting is being evaluated, that grounds the committee members or the uh, the uh, community members to participate in this.
Um, and then are you, are there any other boards committees or commissions that you're aware of that use either this form or any other kind of similar practice other than the Water Utility?
Uh, no, and the reason why we want to bring this to, to the forefront is based on the discussion we had with Melissa and Mayor. There, there has been a lot of uh, um, decline in retention for the BIPOC community so that, you know, we can be able to increase uh, the BIPOC participation in, in the BCCs.
Thank you. Um, I have one question for uh, uh, on her way of becoming chief of staff, Kapusta Pofal. There you are. Um, so, so in the, in the chief of staff role, you'll have, you'll be the point for the BCC admin uh, team. Um, have, how do you anticipate this ordinance would be rolled out across BCCs? And um, I guess monitored?
Thank you. Uh, it's a good question. Um, since we, since the role is, since I've recently entered the role, I haven't had an opportunity yet to um, work on more, you know, formalizing more relations with the admin team and, and starting that discussion up again. I would imagine it would need to, we, we're going to need to create systems for rolling out a lot of things. So um, in terms of just generally, how do we roll out things to all those committee staff? And then how do we um, help them, you know, uh, consistently apply the issues? So it remains to be, you know, finalized as how, as to how we're going to do that. But I would imagine we would treat this just like anything else that we find out about, such as, for example, we have another thing which is putting future agenda item, item, put an item that says future agenda items on all agendas. Um, something that has been passed fairly recently that I'm not sure is being consistently applied. It's another example. So I think that there will be a number of things like that that we'll need to roll out. Um, and monitor. Uh, I'm planning on also getting, you know, um, working on getting some staff groups together to discuss the issues in um, BCC staffing, the staff, who staff, BCC staff, who staff, BCCs, the BCC staff, um, to talk a little bit more about that experience to sort of build, help build a program. So I have not yet been able to start that work, but that's where I'm thinking at this point.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much, Aldo Figueroa. We have ten minutes left, FYI, after you. Aldo, please go ahead.
Thank you. I mean, um, Aldo Foster kind of went on my line of question, how this is going to be rolled out. I can help myself as a business process analyst, how um, I, I, we are putting kind of the, what is that saying? The car before the horse or something in those lines? I always get that backwards, but whatever. Um, so to me, it is important to understand what, how we're going to roll this out, how it's going to be implemented. And more importantly, if these conversations that we're having between Melissa and the mayor, um, how, how we are going to measure that the input that we, that was received from the mayor and Melissa has any impact? Like, who's going to be um, tracking this? I mean, are we saying now that the council, the staff on council is going to be doing that? Are they going to be collecting information, reporting back to someone? Um, you know, how does that work? It's just, it, just the, the idea of collecting data, just for collecting data, it, it's just, it just means more work. What I would like to better understand, what is the final um, impact that we're trying to, to um, you know, to target? Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Coe. Uh, Aldo Rahilly, up to you if you want to respond to the question, the data collection part.
I, I think for the data collection, uh, some, some of it doesn't need data collection. For example, if you are using just as a, as an observer, it's just like merely just discussing what, how the meeting went. And then the second and the third one might be, the second one also doesn't need uh, data collection as it will be an agenda item for discussion in that meeting. The third one is the one that needs data collection. And I think I will refer that to Karen as to once she, uh, how, how that will be rolled out. Uh, initially, we said the staff that's uh, staffing the uh, BCC can collect. And if there is some kind of negative uh, evaluation where they can involve the Chair or the Vice Chair, that could also be mitigated and might not need uh, data collection. So again, it, that should be something Karen can visualize to see how that will uh, play out. But I think the main objective is how we as, you know, others or committee members, when we're going into meetings, that we have responsibility to create a safe environment for those who are serving our uh, city.
Thank you, Aldo Rahilly. Aldo Heck.
Thank you. Uh, Aldo Rahilly, I, I really appreciate your goal with this. But I, I'm, and I'm sure that the Water Utility Board is a well-oiled machine. But my fear is that, that most BCCs will do exactly what the Water Utility Board has been doing and that not much new uh, change will come about as a result of this. Do you have that fear or no?
No.
Okay. Well, I admire your optimism.
And I, thank you. I, I think the other piece is like, you know, how we can be able to train uh, BCC, but that's something that's in the long run. So uh, but mainly is, I think, how we walk into the, into this space and be responsible for our own actions and in serving our community. So, so it's not just um, like, it's, it's an expectation from our own self, but also expectation for others to provide that space.
Thanks. And, and just one more question about the procedure. On the Water Utility Board, is it always the same member observer or do they choose a new one each time?
They choose every time new one.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll, and I'll encourage you to, to watch one of the meeting. It's, it's, it's just free, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Heck. Thank you, Aldo Rahilly. We have five minutes left. We have a motion on the floor to adopt. Is there any objection? Aldo Foster.
Thank you. Um, I think uh, I liked what Aldo Rahilly said about the, it seems like the highest value is just sort of the, kind of the reminder aspect of it or the fact that you know, kind of here's, here's what we should be evaluating ourselves against, you know, at, at the end of the meeting. So I think, I think I get the, the idea of that. Um, I, I mean, I am, I'm a little bit worried of adding what I think could become something pretty rote and bureaucratic, especially if it's forced upon all of our BCCs. Um, so I really just sort of worry it's going to turn into something that people won't really embrace and it won't be, won't feel necessarily like something that the committees are, are doing um, kind of thoughtfully. So that's probably my, my biggest concern. I think the other one is um, also requiring it that it be sort of one, one form, a form that the council approves. I just think there's a lot of, lot of variation in our boards committees and commissions. And um, I feel like if, in order for it to be the most effective process and tool, I think there really does need to be some ownership at the, the board committee commission level. So I, I'm hesitant, I guess, to support adopting this as an ordinance at this point and, and putting it out across the board. I would be really interested in sharing this out with other BCCs, uh, even encouraging them to consider using it or, or, you know, a different variation that they come up with. And would kind of be really interested to see, I mean, I, I have a feeling other boards committees, commissions might even come up with other similar processes or, or, or forms or something that could, that we could also share and kind of get some best practice around it. Because I, I do, I, I definitely understand sort of the goal behind it and I think there's something to it. I just don't, I don't think it would be a good idea to turn this into an ordinance and to actually just require it at this point. So that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Heck.
Thank you. I, I agree that we should empower the BCCs to, to consider this and, and even supplement it and, and find ways of doing self-evaluation. I think it's a great goal, but I, I, I do worry that we're going to require uh, extra work and it's just going to become busy work. I, I'm thinking again about that three-person subcommittee that I'm on where we can barely get an agenda together sometimes and doing busy, what I think could turn into busy work for some entities. And it could really be valuable for others. Um, doesn't need to be an ordinance and that, that, that we should fold this into our rethinking of training and, and moving BCCs forward, which I, I, I assume we're going to do in the coming year. So I, I won't be supporting that. Thanks.
Thank you. Aldo McKinney.
Um, is a substitute motion in order? A motion in order?
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to move that um, Okay, I would like to move that this be placed on file without prejudice.
Standing second? Second by Aldo Carter. Did you wish to speak first?
Um, no, because it does have some value, and I don't think that we can really sort through this in the two minutes that's left. And so looking at it and then determining what pieces work and what pieces we can move on, exactly what to do with it. And I think that the work that Aldo Rahilly has put in that, into it, deserves that second look, and we really don't have the time to actively, you know, really process this. And so that's why I'm placing it on file without prejudice, because it gives us an opportunity to take another look at it.
Thank you very much, Aldo McKinney. There's only one minute left. I will just chime in too. I think so we should refer this rather than placing on file without prejudice and give us a good time to really discuss about some of the things I do see a value with evaluation. I do know, during my time as a council president and when I was as a vice president, we have situation and sustainable medicine committee where there was member who were upset and they resign on the basis of some racial commands, and they felt discriminated. There are a couple of other committees, similar situation happened. I think so some sort of evaluation mechanism can prevent some of those things, if not all. So I don't feel comfortable placing on file, which being, you know, it's not on the table. I will still like to keep on the table with that refer so we can all collectively work, because I heard some good feedback from other members as well.
So I have a question. How can we, what can we do with this document so that we can further discuss it? And so I'm willing to withdraw my motion, but the intent is to really give it further consideration.
I appreciate that. If you withdraw, Aldo Carter, that's second. You were the second. Perfect. All right. With that, Aldo, Vice President, more?
Yes, I just, given the time and where we are in the conversation, I am wondering if it would please the body to refer this item as well as the remainder of our agenda to our next CCEC meeting.
Okay, second by Aldo McKinney. Just move in second. Any objection to that motion?
I object to our next meeting because we are going to actually be digging into the harassment document at our next meeting, which I think is May 24th of, I don't know if Matt Lynn's still here, but I think that's the meeting that we're going to be doing that. So I think that this should be referred to the following meeting after that so we can have a whole meeting.
That's fine with me. Thank you.
With that understanding, this will move to June, June CCEC meeting, whatever the first is. Aldo Rahilly, quick comment on that.
Yes, I'm okay with that. The next, not the May 24th, but the following CCSC.
Whatever the date is, yes, okay.
And in the meantime, we can, we can we can share with the other, you know, BCCs or whoever's involved to, who's interested in.
Aldo Carter, your hand is.
That's all I was gonna say.
Perfect. So there is a motion, there is a second. If there's any objection, please raise your hand. I do not see any hand raised, so with that, we need a motion to adjourn. And before we go motion to adjourn, I really want to say as a last meeting for me, as a council president, I appreciate all the CCC member and staff and as well as other members who regularly attend and give their time on various policy issues. So thank you all very much. I really appreciate all of you.
I would like to offer my, I'm sorry for interrupting Mr. President, but I would also like to offer my thanks for all the hard work that everybody who's been a member of this body over the past year has done, all the staff members who have worked on items and helped us move things forward, as well as other council members and folks that come to listen and learn about things that we're working on during this process. Thank you all so much. This is, it's hard work, and it takes people that care about our city to do that work. And so thank you all for caring so much. And with that, I am happy to make a motion, a motion, not an emotion, a motion to adjourn.
The second by Aldo Rahilly. Thank you, Aldo. See you at 6:30.